All right, it's two o'clock, time to start our weekly Rules and Open Government Committee meeting, so let's take roll.
Davis.
Here.
Jimenez.
Present.
Cami.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
We have a call.
All right, so we will start with a review, there's no agenda for next week, because we don't have a council meeting on the 16th, so we will start with our review of the January 23rd draft agenda. So we have 9:30 closed session, 1:30 regular session, 6:00 PM evening session.
But we also have a study session.
Oh, is that the same?
For the same day.
On the same day? Oh, it's in here?
It's on consent.
No, it's not, no, the study session is not the same day.
Yeah, it is.
Is it? Well, we'll get there. Okay, so Section 2 consent starts on page four, goes to five.
Do we have a date we would place holding for the study session?
Strategic support, Section 3 Annual Report of City Services, Amendment to the Municipal Code for Responsible Construction Ordinance, and then Section 6 Reach Code for EV Infrastructure. For CED, Section 8 North San Pedro Street Pedestrian Mall, that would be heard immediately after consent. Under Section 9, we have an item for financial and compliance audits, and then land use, Section 10, we have one, two, three items on land use. Those are noticed for evening, is that correct? Lee, is it notice for evening, or?
Those are noticed for evening.
For evening, 6:00 PM. Okay, so let's go to public comment.
No hands at this time.
Okay, any questions you want to ask about that study session?
Yeah, so we have, on our rules agenda for today, the study session agenda is for January 23rd for fees and charges, and that's noticed for directly after the council meeting, which has an evening session with three items. So when are we thinking that fees and charges study session is going to happen? 8:00 PM?
So, our thought process was, and we discussed it this morning, that except for one item in the afternoon, the rest of the agenda could move forward quite steadily, and that we could actually do the study session after the afternoon meeting and before land use. So I know that we have another week at this, so I know the Budget Office is going to be talking with Agenda Services to see if we can accommodate that, but that would be something that we would try and do.
Okay.
Yeah, I would argue that we will probably have some discussion on the Annual Report on City Services, that certainly Items 3.4 and 6.1 will elicit some discussion. I know 3.4 will have a lot, 6.1, you know, won't, you know, won't be perfunctory, so I just want to make sure we understand how much time we'll have. If we want to do this in the afternoon before 6 o'clock, how much time we'll have, maybe we'll discuss it at Rules next week.
How long is the presentation for fees and charges?
I believe the whole presentation from staff is about 30 to 35 minutes on both, on how it's done, and then discussion, so it doesn't need to be that long of a study session either.
So we don't think it'll take the regular two hours for a study session?
It's definitely not set up that way right now.
Okay.
Is this in place of a different study session that's on our calendar that's being held?
No, it is not. It was a referral from last year's budget process for several of the incoming council members who felt that they could do more upfront in the way of education around how fees and charges look, and how the preliminary general fund forecast is built, the methodology, but also the kind of conversation before the budget study sessions start around kind of what the Budget Office and our economists are seeing kind of around, you know, the U.S. throughout the state and Bay Area, in the way of what might change the forecast.
Okay.
Thank you, and that, those fees and charges, so I saw the agenda, and I know we're gonna, it's, it's just on consent, and that's why I'm sort of asking, because it's happening at the same time as this meeting. The agenda for that fees and charges didn't say anything about building and construction or permit fees, it talked about animal care licensing and things like that, so will you be talking, will, will PBCE be part of the presentation?
I think all fees and charges and the methodology, yes, absolutely. I know on the, and I know Chris and team are working, you know, after this on additional things for you guys to actually take action on.
Okay.
As well as animal services, we won't take action on those things, but we are definitely doing that work, and it'll become a part of the budget process for sure.
Okay, well, we can have a longer discussion, I suppose, next week, but I'll move, I'll move approval of the Tuesday agenda.
Second.
January 23rd, sorry.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, so let's vote. Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't, I, go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember.
So, just to be clear about the study session, since we're voting on that as part of this motion, the, what is the purpose of the study session on the 25th, which is a placeholder that we all have?
We're gonna be canceling that next week at Rules, so that was a time slot that we had reserved. Unfortunately, I do not believe if we tried to have a study session on that date at this point, we would have a quorum, so we will be canceling that next week.
Okay, so, the, I, I'm, I agree with the study session, I'm concerned about the length of the agenda for that meeting on the 23rd, because I think a couple of those topics will bring a lot of conversation, and actually so will the study session, considering that one of the items highlighted is the animal care, animal care and services license fee, so, and I, I think that will bring people out to talk about it, so it feels like it's going to be a long meeting, which is fine, but I'm concerned about the time certain at 6:00 for the land use issues, are we, is the idea that we would stop at 6:00, do the land use issues, or just get through everything else, and then get to the land use issues when we're done with the rest of the agenda?
The land use issues have been noticed for 6:00, because that's just a normal practice for a night, they can be brought up at any time, so they're, they don't need to be taken up as time certain.
So it's just notice for 6:00, which means anytime after 6:00?
Do we expect people to be coming and concerned about the land use items, so will they be sitting here at 6:00 and we not getting to their items till 11:00? Just, that's a theoretical question, but I don't know what the land use items are, I don't know the level of controversy they have.
Yeah, when we went over them this morning, I did not believe they were controversial, or they would bring out a large number of folks, no.
Okay, all right.
Well, the, I mean, the one, 10.4 has been controversial, it's something that has been a concern to the community, I don't know whether they've, having, not being directly involved in it, I know it will, it's elicited some concerns and a lot of public comment. That's an appeal of a Pipe Planning Commission approval of something, and I, there's a reason for that.
Okay.
The first one's related to the housing element, which we obviously have some questions, but prob, might not be all that long, so I just want to be clear, this is, these are not like, just straightforward, all of them are straightforward.
That's why I asked the question, okay.
But, but let's, let's, let's reconsider and think next week about strategies for how we.
We still have a week to adjust anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll chat with Jim Shannon offline about the study session as well, that was our thought, we had another week at this, so I know things are still kind of falling into place here as everyone gets back in, but if adjustment needs to be made, or things need to be pushed, a week, actually, two weeks, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have, oh, Councilmember Davis.
I just wanted to suggest that, it looks like both 10.3 and 10.4 are in District 5, so maybe talking to Councilmember Ortiz about those two land use items and what he's hearing from the community might give us a sense of whether, you know, it's a big deal if they are heard very late in the evening or not.
Good point.
All right, I think that brings us to our vote on approving the agenda. All right, that motion carries 5-0, now we're on to our consent calendar, we have three items on consent this week, so let's see if there's any public comment on consent.
No hands raised at this time.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, let's vote. All right, that motion carries 5-0, and now we're on to the City Manager's Memo on Request for Policy Analysis, and we'll let you introduce this, Lee.
Thank you, Chair. The administration is bringing forward a proposal to adjust the Rules Committee process to comply with City Council Policy 0-12, which is Request for Policy Analysis. I'd say prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Administration and Rules Committee had started to stray from the policy to try and be more flexible around things, and this policy does need to be updated in regards to policy referrals, not necessarily how they come forward, but how they're tracked and managed. So, part of the, the second part of this recommendation is to direct us to come back in the spring with revisions that you guys would approve and ultimately send to council, since the full council needs to approve it, and that's just around how we track referrals, how we decide, is a referral still relevant, is it still a priority for the Rules Committee, for the full council, and how we manage that workload given the staffing involved. What we are asking today is that we go back to the process, really getting away from what we refer to as an early consideration form, and so, right now, as it works, is someone submits, one of the 11 of the council will submit a policy recommendation to the Rules Committee. The administration, unless we're involved in those proposals, and sometimes we are, sometimes we're not, we typically see those on Friday, and then we're trying to post those Monday afternoon, our, our analysis of whether it's a green, yellow light, or something that we can do, which means we have a great deal of directors or deputy city managers and senior staff meeting through the weekend to try and figure those out. Those policy proposals, as you guys are dealing with things that are way more complex, and what your residents are asking you to do, require a lot of interdepartmental coordination, it's not just one department, a lot of the times it's resource allocation, so it is difficult for us during a three-day period to really be clear of whether something is a green or a yellow light. In addition, the volume of referrals has grown exponentially in recent years, and so just the analysis themselves, us trying to figure out, can we work on this? It distracts staff from actually working on the things that you guys have directed us to do through the budget process or the full council. One of our deputy city managers, because I've asked our folks to really track their time on this, in the last six months, has spent 40% of his time on referrals to the Rules Committee, as opposed to implementing things that Jennifer and I would hold that person accountable for as part of their performance. So, you know, and at the same vein, it also kind of takes away the legitimacy of the Rules Committee to some extent on whether we should be doing that, there's no decision point right now of, is this worth staff's time to analyze something like this? You guys are really reacting to, are we, do we have capacity or not, and because of that dynamic, it's kind of layered referral on to referral on to referral, and that's not necessarily helpful for you guys that need us to be nimble, to meet community needs, and it's not helpful for us as, as we deal with limited resources, trying to focus on those things that you've asked us to focus on. So what we're asking to do is go back to a similar approach where if something is introduced, it's heard the following week, and this body decides how or whether it should move forward. You guys can drop it, or you can refer it to us to do official workload analysis. We would generally have two weeks to do that analysis and come back to you. As I've worked it out with staff, I think there are times where some of that analysis will be really straightforward, obviously a resolution or something like that doesn't need a workload analysis that can be moved forward to the full council, but some workload analysis will be really straightforward, and it can come back to Rules the following week. There are other times where we made a little bit more than, than two weeks. I think the one thing that we've fallen short on, which we've tried to do in the early consideration form, is to paint a picture for, for you, to say, well, this is a yellow light, but you can do it if we deprioritize these things, or here's the trade-offs, and we haven't been able to accomplish that in the three or four days that we have to really respond in an early consideration form, so it, it's hard for us to be nimble, like there's times where we've yellowlit something that I feel like if we've had more time, we probably could have said, you know what, maybe these two, three things aren't incredibly important right now, and this needs to be prioritized. This allows us to have that conversation, and allows a little bit more flexibility for all, so this proposal goes back to that process, and again, we would come forward in the spring, but happy to answer any questions that the Rules Committee has.
All right, thank you. Let's start with public comment.
Jeffrey.
Chair Cohen and members of the Committee, Jeffrey Buchanan, on behalf of Working Partnerships USA, certainly appreciate the, the initial thinking from staff on this issue, but just, I, I am concerned that some of the changes here, depending on how they're implemented, you know, could really limit the, the power of individual council offices to how they're able to represent their, their constituencies, how they're able to move policy forward, in the absence of, you know, those policies being within the council priority setting or within the budget, you know, the, the referral process is, you know, traditionally one of the ways which individual council members or, or sets of council members are really able to set staff on working on, you know, very important policy issues that may not be already work that's in, in the works, and I, I just really would encourage this body to consider, do we really want, you know, as of right now, we've seen past items come before the Rules Committee, staff expressing concerns about trying to figure out the staffing, or trying to wrap their hands around an issue and deferring the process, there's nothing in the current way that the Rules Committee runs its business that would prohibit working in that fashion in the future if there really is this kind of a lag. Adopting this kind of policy for across the board, you know, delaying referrals coming forward, and, you know, seeming to implement an annual process to perhaps, you know, end work that has begun but has not been completed, presents some real challenges to what the power of council members are moving forward in the city. Thank you so much.
Back to the committee.
All right, thank you, we'll start with Councilmember Foley.
Thank you, thank you, Lee, for articulating the background information on this, so, so the way things occur now is a council member can come through with a memo to us, it comes to staff first, you vet it over five days, including Saturday and Sunday, and then it gets put on our agenda to consider, it, is, that's the current process. You're asking that we adopt a policy where we can drop the item when it's submitted to us, defer it when it's submitted to us, or ask for you to do an analysis, and in which case you're looking for up to two weeks to analyze something, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, so I, I actually like that direction, and, and here's the reason why, I, I feel sometimes items come through Cat, through Rules Committee that are really complicated issues, and without the full, and oftentimes, sta, you're, the staff is very, is working very hard to see how they can greenlight it or yellowlight it, they're, very rarely are they red lighting anything, they're trying to find a way, you and your staff are fi, trying to find a way to say yes and move it forward, but if you're only given five days to analyze it, in my mind, that's really not enough time in a complicated issue, especially when you have several departments that you may be addressing, say, for example, it's a safe parking situation that you want to bring forward regarding the unhoused and, or RV parks, RVs, and then you have to, there's a lot of places you have to go to analyze whether that's an early, a yellowlit, greenlit, or redlit, so I like the idea of rules being able to say, you know, no, we're going to drop it, we're going to say, no, we're not going to approve that at a, at a rules, or we're going to defer it, or we're going to ask you to come back in two weeks for more analysis for something that is a more complicated issue. I think that empowers rules to understand the issues in a deeper and more thoughtful way, and make a decision in a more thoughtful way. I'm also concerned about workload, because when you are analyzing it, you are working, looking at look, workload, but we're, we're not looking at it and saying, what are you giving up? What, what things that, the full council's already approved on a priority basis, which of those things are now you setting, setting aside? So when Rule says move everything forward, it's not giving credit or giving you time to work on the priority items that the full council has already said, so with that, I will move approval of the item.
All right, there's a motion in a second, we'll go to Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, and thank you, Lee, for, for bringing this forward, I, I first of all want to say, I certainly don't want senior staff regularly having to work on the weekends, I think enough things come up that staff needs to work on the weekends, and this is a more administrative task that should be done regularly during the work week, so I appreciate that thought on that. I, I, my question, you, before you talked a little bit about prioritization, was, was about how do we fit this into our priorities if it's still on a case-by-case basis? We're not go, I, I want to kind of go through this a little bit with you, because my assumption at the beginning was similar to what, what Jeffrey Buchanan was commenting on, which it sounded like we were going back to our regular priority setting process, or our previous priority setting process, but I, in hearing you talk, I don't think that's what you're saying, I think this is kind of a middle way, so can you talk a little bit about what the discussion will be on the early consideration forms, or what the analysis will be about current priorities as we set through the budget, and, and how this is sort of a, a way to maybe amend that process a little bit as things come up so that we can be a little bit more nimble, but also be mindful of what the full council has agreed upon?
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you for the question. And I should state, too, this isn't actually a new policy change. It's the existing policy. We've just veered from it, and especially during the pandemic where we wanted to be super nimble, we just, you know, we changed kind of all the due dates for things, and that was needed at that time. I think this gets back to, you know, part of, when you look at the, like, mission of the Rules Committee, or any Rules Committee really in a legislative structure, they manage policy referrals and that workload. And right now, we don't do a very good job as an administration of showing you what that workload is and helping you guys make decisions around managing it. So when that proposal right now comes forward, A, we don't necessarily have the time that we would like to show, hey, we can do this, but these things might need to go by the, you know, stall for a month or two. And then B, we don't paint a very good picture of the entire referrals that the administration has from the council. So I know Jennifer shares with you, and Sarah loves putting together all the council referrals through the years, through the budget process, through all of the meetings, you know, council meetings, and then Rules Committee. So that gets sent to you. We don't necessarily ever draw a line on that and say, here's what we can do right now, and then you guys and us in this, you know, in this meeting saying, well, this is yellowlit, but if we change this line or remove this thing here for a while, we can do this thing. And so I don't, you know, and in those cases, if it is changing council direction from the budget, like Jeffrey said, or anything else, that would need to go to the full council. You know, there can't be one individual that decides that a referral isn't important anymore. But we do need to be able to show you that and have that conversation with you so that the most important things rise to the top. And certainly, by no means is this a way to get rid of work or something unimportant. It's so that the most important thing has the opportunity to bubble to the top, but you guys need to see that information, and we need to be able to present it in the correct way.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And so I guess the only thing I would say is, we haven't had that discussion at the full council either, and this would be a really good opportunity for us not only to start having those discussions in, probably in more detail here at Rules about whether we move something forward, but if we do decide to move a referral forward, to have that as part of the discussion for that item about what we are giving up when we vote to pass that item, if we are indeed directing staff to do whatever the referral says. So I think that would be important for staff to ensure that we have those conversations. Oftentimes, when a referral comes to the full council, staff, we don't have a staff presentation on a referral. We have maybe a little bit of discussion at council about it, but there's not a big staff presentation on what the trade-offs are. And so this, to me, is, I think it's a good, you say it's going back to the policy, but it is actually a change in how it would work, because it didn't work this way. I mean, I've been on Rules for seven years. It hasn't ever worked that way in having those trade-off discussions on a specific item. We just either referred them to priority setting or moved them forward.
Yeah, and I would agree with you, and I think the first part of this, just going back to the previous policy on the steps, it hasn't been done in a very long time. And I'm probably starting to get into recommendation, too, on how we're going to look at all those referrals together.
Yeah.
That will be a change in the council policy. When we ultimately do come forward, that'll need to go to the full council. So I think starting to illustrate that, hey, we need to have this conversation, and we're about to start the budget process this year, where we're going to ask to be focused and prioritize the most important, so we need to figure out a way for those conversations to happen in parallel for you all.
Okay. And so when you say drop, defer, or request staff to complete an early consideration response form, the defer would be defer to the budget process, the next budget process? Like, we could say, this is important but not urgent, so we're going to move that to a more fulsome discussion later with a list of priorities, and then if we want to do an early consideration form, we're basically saying, we think this is important enough to analyze whether we should do it right now.
That's what I meant, yes.
Okay.
Or I would just say, or it could be a defer to a future, to a committee, to a future, you know, to a Rules Committee meeting in the future, because it's not urgent. It could be any form of deferral, I would assume.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure you guys had flexibility as a governing body.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Kamau.
Thank you. I do believe that the five days is insufficient time to really do the work that is necessary, so I agree with my colleagues. I do think that as you're thinking about how you're going to bring this back, one of the things that I think needs to be thought about was this idea of emergencies or urgent issues that arise. I mean, given that, yes, we have our priority setting, we go through the budget process and all of that, but as things happen throughout the year, there are these urgent matters or emergencies that may come up. So, you know, having some kind of understanding, recognition that sometimes there will be something, could be rare, but that there will be something, I think that that would be very helpful to be nimble enough so that if there are any changing circumstances, that we can address them, or, you know, we can do something about it. In terms of how this works its way through and happens with Rules, you know, I also want to be mindful of delays, right? So if it is urgent and it is an emergency, you know, balance that, you know, timeframe in which you have to get that back and not just say, oh, well, you know, you got two weeks. So I think that certainly having that in mind, I think it's going to be helpful. I like the idea of the trade-offs being discussed openly, and I'm going to say very clearly, I don't think that it's helpful to have forty-two priorities. That's like no priorities. So I hope we don't, I hope that this does not sort of revert back to that kind of a system where it's unmanageable, because there's too much. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, just a few questions and a few thoughts. The first question I had was, Lee, is there any way you could quantify or share with us, like, how often, for example, when, I'll call it referrals, are brought forward, you know, memos put forward by a council member, how often is it the case that there's actually work between one of the offices in the city and that respective council member as it relates to, hey, I'm thinking of doing this, what do you think? And the reason I ask that is if that happens often, I mean, to me, that's, some of those discussions are sort of informing the, what I imagine is the early consideration form already, right? So some of that work's happening before it's even submitted, but I'm just curious if you have a sense.
Yeah, I would probably say more than half. The come forward to the Rules, staff in some case has responded to, I think, or worked with the office. And that takes a variety of shapes and forms. Sometimes it is to, I think, Councilmember Foley's request, the office, like, hey, I really want to do this, but is it a green light? Or it may be just as a heads-up, like, hey, I'm doing this, you know, because of X, Y, and Z. So those interactions are very different, depending on the office, but I'd say more than half. There's pretty good collaboration amongst the Eighteenth Floor and the rest of the building, for sure.
Okay, all right. And so with regard to some of the comments about, like, I think in the memo, talking about a week to analyze things, and maybe, you know, it hasn't been thought about deeply enough, and sometimes it's yellow when it probably shouldn't have been red, or whatever it may be. What currently, like, because I think I've seen it maybe only a few times, in which there's, it's red, there's a red light, and it says, no, we just don't have the capacity or time. I've even seen instances in my short time on Rules where you all said, we need more time to analyze, and I think we've agreed to that when that's come up. I'm just wondering how the current, trying to wrap my head around how the current way we do stuff does, I feel like it still allows what we're, essentially the road we're going down, if you will. So as an example, drop, defer, or need more analysis, I feel like, I'm just trying to think of how the mechanics of it would work, but if something was submitted under the current sort of way, any of us can say, let's drop it, or there can be no second, if you will, and it just dies, or we can say, let's defer it, or let's send off to staff for further analysis. So I'm trying to understand sort of how this new approach gives us new tools, if you will, when I feel like we can do some of this stuff already? We can even say, if you all say, hey, we need more time, we can even push it out, and I think we might have done that, push it out a few weeks to give you more time to analyze, too. And so I'm trying to understand sort of what, if your opinion is that we can't currently do this stuff.
Yeah, I would just say two things to that. I think, you know, sometimes these policy proposals come forward, and there's community support or opposition to them. A majority of the time, when we've asked for those extra weeks, I'm doing it here on the dais, and maybe I'm not be able to be in contact with the community, so the community shows up for no apparent reason, and I know the offices, there's been frustration from offices when I have asked for additional time for staff, because, you know, they've worked with the community on this proposal, and, you know, it's not easy for people to show up here on a Tuesday, or I'm sorry, on a Wednesday at two o'clock sometime. So I think that's part of it. I would say the second part is, with such limited resources, it would be nice, I do think, whether staff goes and does that analysis, like, as a body, do you want staff to spend time on that analysis before we go and do it, is an important question, because those, these referrals are becoming more robust and complicated, as they should be, because you guys aren't dealing with small things, they are big things. And having that type of question upfront is important, because those, yeah, they are complicated and they require a lot of time from staff.
Right, all right, that resonates with me, I understand that. The other thing that I thought about is, you know, the way it works currently is, you submit a memo that you want to bring before Rules the following week, the Thursday before by noon, I think is the deadline? Maybe I'm wrong on the exact.
I think you, yeah, you need to send it into the clerk's office Thursday by noon, and then when the clerk publishes it on Friday is when we see it, unless we've been working with the office.
Right, and then the following week, it comes to us here.
Correct.
And so would a modification of, I'm just thinking out loud here, when that submission happens to the clerk, that it comes to Rules two weeks later instead of one week later? I mean, that still doesn't get around, what I'm just suggesting is pushing it out a little bit to give you all more time, but to your point earlier about, does it warrant investigation, right, I guess?
Yeah, I think that's an important question for you guys.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, just thinking about what we currently do, because it's the only system that I've been working under on Rules, and just thinking out loud as to whether we can actually do some of the stuff that we seek to do, so, anyway, I'll stop.
And I should just say, too, to your point on some of that and to the Vice Mayor's point, there's nothing within the existing policy on us following it. If something is an emergency, or if it's a referral, and it's very straightforward, there's nothing wrong with me coming into Rules saying, this, I can tell you right now, we don't need to do a full-blown analysis, this would be a green light, and you guys are just moving it along as well. There's nothing that prohibits anything like that.
Yeah, just to follow up on that point, well, I think what's changing here, it's not really changing much of what we do at Rules, it's changing the timing of when detailed analysis is done. And to your point, I mean, moving, giving more time for the analysis is one option, but having that extra checkpoint isn't necessarily a bad thing. But, you know, what I've been bothered by in this current process, is things get submitted Thursday, staff works probably on Monday, creating an early consideration form. I don't think it's very robust. I don't think that many of the early consideration forms I see have good enough analysis in them. And then the other problem is that as members of Rules, we don't even see, sometimes I don't see the early consideration form until I sit at this desk and it's sitting right in front of me. We don't have time to review the analysis before making a decision. So I actually think there is part of this process that needs adjustment, and that this will help with that. So I do agree with that. I would just like, there's a few, a few questions I have, and then also some friendly amendments I want to, in terms of wording and language, because I think back to Vice Mayor Kamau's point, we do want to make sure it's clear in what we do here today, that we're not saying we can't move something forward on that first day. And I think if having that language in there would be helpful, so I would suggest adding amendment to the end of 1B that says, comma, or move forward to council without analysis. So we're saying, we have the option to say, we don't need an analysis, we want to move it forward. And that gives us that, in an emergency situation, a very straightforward or a resolution or something like that, the ability to bypass the analysis and just go straight to council. So that's a request of mine for friendly amendment.
But, so you want the option to not have any analysis?
Well, because there wouldn't be analysis that first week, but sometimes if it's a resolution, like when we had the LGBT resolution or something, there is no analysis that's done, we don't need an analysis, and we're ready to move it forward. So I just want to make sure it's clear, we still have that option as a Rules Committee.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, a second, okay. So that's the first. I have a question about the workload analysis. It's currently called the early consideration form. It seems that you are changing the name of it, although I would also ask for a change in 1C, so it's consistent language and it doesn't use the phrase anymore, early consideration form. Is it just about workload? I mean, when you do that analysis, will it, is it really, is the analysis going to be just about how much work it takes, or will there be additional analysis about how it fits into council's priorities and other things?
Yeah, I think it would really be three layers, and we really only get into the first layer now, but of what's been directed, can we do that with existing resources? So it would obviously be that, that's what we attempt to do now. The second thing, layer, is if we can't do it with existing resources, what are the trade-offs? You could do it if we deprioritize, you know, one and two of something. And then the third is, yes, the, in the budget process, as a full council, you guys chose to focus on these four, five, six, seven things. This complements one of those, or distracts from one of those, or, you know, enhances, you know, in some cases, these are really hard. I mean, the council has talked a lot about, you know, just in reference to what we have right now, the four focus areas. We've talked about, well, the referral should only really help the four focus areas. It makes sense to some degree, at the same point in time, the four focus areas, we have staff working on what you've already directed in the budget process. And maybe there's another department where, you know, they have room on policy, you know, work, because they don't, they're not involved in a focus area, but we don't necessarily get to have that discussion with you guys through the existing process. So that third layer, I think we would try and hit in our workload analysis, all three of those.
Right, and back to Jeffrey's point in public comment, I mean, I think many of us are elected because there are things outside of the focus areas that are priorities for us, that we should have the opportunity to bring forward and set up some process by which it occurs.
Absolutely.
So that needs to continue. Okay, thank you for that. So for, well, before I ask, I'll put it all together. Now, my second question is about item two. Item two comes back, that one is about coming straight back to council, right? You wouldn't come back to Rules with number two, right? You'd go straight to council with that? Or would you come to Rules first and say, here's what we're thinking that we're bringing to council?
I think we're open to what the Rules Committee would want. That would be amending a council policy, so the final decision-maker of whether council policy is amended or not is the city council, so we could go directly there. But as the Rules Committee is kind of the gatekeeper and helping manage those referrals, I could see it coming back to you guys first before it goes to the full council. So we're, as an administration, open.
Okay. I mean, I don't have a strong opinion, we can ask others. The last part of that is, and I know, Sarah, you came, if you want to give this answer, I know Lee's doing a good job of answering in your place, but I heard that, Lee, you say something earlier about having over seven hundred outstanding past council referrals on a list somewhere. Is that, is that an accurate number?
I think the active list is much smaller, so we've been able to take referrals off from previous councils from years ago. So, Sarah, what is the active list right now? About two-hundred and forty.
So there's two-hundred and forty active referrals that the council has sent to staff that are still incomplete, incomplete. And what you're suggesting on your last part of this is, go through that list and decide which ones are worth continuing, and which ones maybe we ought to ask the council to allow us to drop. Is that the purpose of that item?
I think part of it, yes, but the other part is a framework for having a conversation with you on, I think, what do we say here, Sarah, on annual or biannual basis, so that you can see that, because there's a lot of different things that, you know, you vote on in June, and circumstances change, and by December, there might be a different priority that you need to move because something else has happened. So it's a way of us having a more formal conversation with you and us tracking the referrals better.
Right, I understand, that's sort of the, so there's three, there's three parts of item two, which, first one is, the first one is updated version of council policy. I think the translator got on the wrong, okay. The updated policy, that's the first item. The second item is the annual report, or some kind of report that says, here's The second item is the annual report, or some kind of report that says, here's all of these different things, and here's where they all stand, which I think is useful, and that gives us the framework for that conversation. The third item is specifically saying a recommendation to drop referrals that are no longer, that no longer seem to be a priority, or we haven't been working on it, we don't think will ever get done, or whatever it is, whoever makes that decision. Is that an accurate reading of what you're suggesting here?
Afternoon, okay, there we go. Sarah Sarate, Director of the City Manager's Office of Administration, Policy, and Intergovernmental Relations. So, we have right now somewhere between 220 to 240 referrals. That includes budget referrals and policy referrals. We regularly provide you, the city manager provides you with a report that provides an update on budget-related referrals. This new round, the next round, will include policy referrals as well. So, what we're proposing is, we're going to continue communicating those updates to you on a regular basis throughout the year, but then also provide an annual report through the Rules Committee that would allow you to potentially drop any items that are really old and perhaps just do not align anymore with the current priorities.
Okay, but it's not necessarily a one, an exercise that will happen upfront with, or it'll happen even right now in the first year, looking through all those, and, but you're specifically saying recommendations, so staff would recommend, these are the items we think we could let go, right?
That's right. We're hoping to come up with a framework for you.
And that's the question, that item could go straight to council rather than come to Rules. I mean, I don't necessarily feel it has to come to Rules first. I mean, we can have that conversation at council. I would, I'm a little concerned only about the last phrase, which says, no longer aligned with existing council priorities, because I'm not sure, I could look up anywhere and see what our priorities are. I mean, I know we have things that we've sort of have a priority setting process, but we, you know, as I said, there's some things that do fall outside what we consider to be printed priorities. So, I would just argue that there's some, you know, maybe another way of saying that, which is, and I had written this down here, which is, recommendation for, to drop referrals that should no longer be pursued by staff, or something. And then, that could give you the flexibility to say, these items, for various reasons or whatever reason, but I just don't, I just don't know that we should be doing analysis as to, does this line up to what priority? But you could say, hey, this one was still an important thing that we're doing, and this one, we haven't done anything in three years, it's probably not going to happen, we feel like it should be dropped. So, is that, does that language make sense, Lee and Sarah? Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Okay. And the other friendly amendment I have is very simple.
Any more wordsmithing?
No, yes, it is, because, yeah, but 1C, just make sure, cross out the early consideration form and just change it to workload analysis, since that's the new terminology, just to make sure that's consistent. That's the only other change I would recommend. Okay, thank you. Anyway, and as far as the process going forward, if, once we approve this today, item one is official policy, it won't come to council, right? Is that the idea? Because it's Rules saying how we operate as a Rules body.
Yes, we're actually just going back to complying with existing policy.
So, as of next week, this would be the way we do referrals?
Correct.
And two then will be something you work on and bring to council?
We'll bring in the future, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, unless there's any other questions or comments, let's move to a vote. All right, that motion carries, and we are moving on to open forum.
We have two in-person speakers. As I call your names, please make your way to the podium. And when you get to the podium, please state your first name. They also have an interpreter with them. Ramona Dionisia, please come ahead.
So, we will have, I will be translating for her.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Ramona Martinez. Tengo 17 años trabajando en el área de comida rápida. Soy cocinera y pues en el verano pasado nosotros nos fuimos a huelga porque las condiciones del aire acondicionado no funcionaba y fue la razón por la que tomamos eso de irnos a huelga. Y a la semana que nos fuimos a huelga empezaron a reparar toda esa área y nos dimos cuenta que pues realmente nosotros como trabajadores también tenemos derecho y pues a veces tenemos miedo de decirlo porque pensamos que vamos a hacer despedidos y ya que nosotros somos jefes de familia, cabeza de familia y tenemos miedo muchas veces de perder nuestro trabajo. Y no estamos muy informados sobre las leyes, sobre las condiciones que debemos de tener dentro del área de nuestro trabajo. Por eso hoy les pido a cada uno de ustedes que nos escuchen, que nos apoyen, que nos informen, que vean por nosotros, porque pues hay muchas necesidades dentro de nuestros trabajos. Y pues gracias al concejal, a los concejales y a cada uno de ustedes por escucharme, porque he alzado mi voz y porque sé que nos van a apoyar, a los 13,000 empleados de comida rápida. Esperando contar con cada uno de ustedes ya que ustedes nos representan y pues tengo la plena seguridad que ustedes van a apoyarme. Pues muchas gracias.
I would translate a shorter version of that. Hello, everyone, my name is Ramona Martinez. I have worked as a cook in the fast food industry for 17 years. This past summer, I led my coworkers on the strike because of the unbearable heat that we were exposed to while working in the kitchen without a working AC or fan. A week after our strike, our AC was repaired, and all of us workers were relieved to finally have a working AC after years of putting up with brutal hot summers here in San Jose. This experience showed me that I have the right to a safe working environment and to speak up about unsafe working conditions. As a worker, I feel a lot more confident in my job now that I know my rights on the job, but I know there are many more workers who continue to work in fear and unsafe conditions. Thank you to all the council members, thank you to Councilmember Cohen for standing with 13,000 fast food workers in San Jose. We help all of our city leaders and journalists in improving our industry. Thank you.
Dionisia?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Dionisia Cervasio. Trabajo en restaurante comida rápida en San Jose. Estoy aquí tocando las violencias que han pasado en mi restaurante y en todos los demás. Queremos apoyo de todos ustedes, que nos apoyen. Y... Ya se me olvidó. En mi restaurante hay personas que no quieren salir del restaurante, le hablan a la policía para que vaya a sacarlos, pero los patrones no hacen nada, nos han rompiendo los vidrios del drive-through de la puerta de la entrada, nos han ponchado las llantas de los carros, a un compañero mío lo golpearon en el parqueadero, estaba el manejador y no hizo nada. Queremos que por favor nos apoyen y les damos gracias a todos ustedes por el apoyo que nos están dando y queremos que nos sigan dando el apoyo. Gracias.
She was just a little nervous, it's her first time speaking. Good afternoon, my name is Dionisia Cervasio, and I work the night shift at McDonald's in San Jose. Fast food workers in San Jose have been and continue to ring the alarm about our dangerous working conditions. At my store, we have dealt with violent customers who have slashed our car tires, broken drive-through windows, and our main entrance doors was broken by huge cement blocks while we were on shift. The police are coming to our store often, but management hasn't done anything to protect us or train us on what to do in this type of situations. This isn't just happening at my store, it's happening around the three stores around my area and throughout many more stores in the city. I'm here to ask for your support in ensuring that companies we work for take our safety seriously. I only started speaking up after learning my rights as a worker, but too many workers in the industry are too afraid to speak up because they don't know they have a right to. Please support the 13,000 fast food workers in San Jose who desperately need to learn our rights as workers. By understanding our rights, we know we have the right to safe working condition environments. Together, we can improve our industry so families can thrive in San Jose without fear or never coming home from work. We're grateful for the support of all the council members here in the Rules Committee, and thank you to Councilmember Cohen who has expressed solidarity with fast food workers. We ask all of you to join us in ensuring safe and good jobs in San Jose. Thank you.
No other virtual speakers, back to the committee.
Okay, well, thank you for your public comment, and our meeting is adjourned at 2:54 PM.